Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for this day that we're able to come together and be able to discuss the different matters for our county. I thank you for each one of these people that are in this room, those who are here to listen and spectate, and also those who are here to discuss the different matters and bring the issues to the table and also the potential problems and challenges that we face. I pray that everything that we do would be done in wisdom, control, and that we would first and foremost seek to do all that would be good for our fellow man. We thank you for this beautiful day and all that is within it. We pray that each person would have a blessed day today as they leave this place. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Josh. Our next order of business will be public hearings, and we do have a public hearing this morning, and the public hearing will be regarding the Southwest Commission, I mean, the Southwestern North Carolina Home Consortium Annual Action Plan. And we have the Southwestern Commission Senior Project Manager Caroline LaFrenier.
LaFrenier.
Let's say it again.
LaFrenier.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So I'll give just-
Thanks for being out today.
Of course. I'm going to give a quick overview of the consortium, and then I'll discuss the annual action plan. So our home consortium is currently six counties in western North Carolina that receives home funds from HUD. So these funds are used to provide grants to local governments, nonprofits, and developers on a reimbursable basis to provide affordable housing and housing assistance to low to moderate income individuals and households in our region. So this public hearing, like you said, is for the annual action plan. That is a document that HUD requires to ensure that the projects that we're funding in our region align with our consolidated plan. That consolidated plan is a five-year action plan that was adopted by this board also. Both of those plans are available on our website, and the public comment period for our annual action plan will end on August 15th. I have some business cards here if anyone would like to get on our website and look at the plan. So like I said, the annual action plan will be a guide for making sure that our projects align with our consolidated plan, and the plan will be updated again in September after the consortium board of directors make their final funding decisions for this funding cycle. We have $947,000 to distribute among applicants this year. It's pretty exciting. The applications closed this past Friday, and we received eight applications, so hopefully we'll be able to fund some pretty good projects that will help people get into some stable housing this year. Also unrelated a little bit, but I have decided to take a couple of years off to stay home with my daughter, so I wanted to introduce you to Becca Scott. She is the Director of Community and Economic Development for the Southwestern Commission, so she will be your contact probably about September 1st, but I plan to go part-time to help with any transitions after that period. So thank you for all of your work and for supporting the consortium, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Can you give us some details about what the consortium did last year, just so we'll have something to-
Sure. Yeah, so this past year, we gave some funds to mountain projects for the Bethel Village project to help with down payment assistance so that people can get into like first-time homebuyer programs like that. We've done some rental assistance, so security deposits, utility deposits, rental assistance to make monthly rent more affordable for households. We have done, we can do new construction of affordable housing, like Ly-Tech Low-Income Housing Tax Credit projects, so big developments that are very expensive, and we can just provide a little bit of gap funding to help make those more affordable and help them meet their pro forma. We also partnered with a nonprofit Foursquare Community Action Agency that serves the four far western counties, and they have partnered with landlords to rehab rental housing so that they're just safer, more stable housing for the people that they're renting to.
Did you help with that project to pave that subdivision off of Old Clyde Road? What's the name of that one?
Is that Mountain Projects?
Yeah, I think so.
So we didn't help with that. We're going to help with the site prep for 10 of those parcels.
Home ownership's very important, and we appreciate what you do.
It is.
Safe places to live. And you're doing the right thing. You're going to enjoy the next couple of years off with your little one.
It's a bittersweet decision. The consortium feels a little bit like my baby also, but not as cute.
No, you probably make better memories at home. We'll see. But thanks for what you do.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, congratulations on the two years. You probably, you might even want to just make that forever, but anyway, it's okay. And congratulations on you stepping into that, so.
Thanks, Becca.
Yeah. So at this time, do I open up for public comment? For, does anybody want to comment on this issue? Not, we'll do the public comment in a minute, but anybody have any comments on, I'll open that up for public comment. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we'll close public comment and close the public hearing. So thank you all for coming out today. Our next order of business is our public comment session. If you would limit your comments to three minutes, and Amy will let you know when that time is up. And one person I have signed up to speak was Monroe Miller.
It has been almost 90 days since my initial request to Joey Webb Jr., requesting that he provide me an exact copy of Terry Ramey's confidential cellphone information he sent to Corey Valencourt, who then printed confidential information in the Smokey Mountain News tabloid. On May 12th, I sent a request for public information to Joey Webb Jr., where I stated, "Please send me the exact, and I mean exact, copies of the information that you sent to Corey Valencourt," which includes every time you sent Corey Valencourt information. So here's a possible scenario. Let's suppose that Joey Webb, that Joey Webb Jr. connected to Terry Ramey's cellphone to a county computer, then Joey Webb Jr. used the send feature on Terry Ramey's phone to transmit vital information to the county computer. Once on the county computer, the following people spent God knows how much time going through the redaction process: Joey Webb Jr., Frank Queen, and Bryant Moorhead. Once this priceless set of data was completely redacted, Joey Webb then closed it up in a file ready to send up for Corey data, Corey Valencourt. But then Joey Webb Jr. forgot to remove the original send data from this glob of data from Terry Ramey's phone and sent Corey Valencourt both the redacted data plus the original unredacted data. Corey Valencourt must have and did have a field day. If this possible scenario holds out, I see only two paths. If Joey Webb Jr. intentionally sent the send file providing access of Terry Ramey's vital personal and private information to Corey Valencourt, then Joey Webb Jr. could possibly be looking at spending some time in an eight-by-10-foot room at a federal institution. Or if Joey Webb provided access to Terry Ramey's vital personal and private information to Corey Valencourt through either incompetence or stupidity, then Joey Webb Jr. should resign or be fired. I appreciate your allowing time for me to express my concerns. Thank you.
Would anyone else care to address the board this morning? Oh, yeah, come on up now.
Good morning. I have a question for the prior person. This is America. What's my private, what's your private, is none of his business. How does he keep asking this all the time? County business? Wasting time? Is he some government official that's above us all? To me, what you talk, what I talk, what he talks is nobody else's business. I think it ought to be stopped. And to me, he's making threats about Mr. Webb and his job. This county shouldn't allow that. It gets old. No sense in it. What Mr. Ramey and Pusson or your business is none of his business. But it seems like I enjoy coming up here, listening to county business. He ought to sit on it and let it ride, whatever it is. Or call the liberal government we got and do something. Thank you.
Would anyone else care to address the board? Yeah, I'll close the public comment session. We'll move to constituent concerns. Just want to make, we'll be holding a public hearing during the regular meeting on August 21st, 2023, to receive comments on a proposed amendments to the County of Haywood, North Carolina Code of Ordinances to the following ordinances. Chapter 50, Solid Waste; Chapter 90, Addressing and Road Naming; Chapter 116, Adult Entertainment Establishments; Chapter 153, Mountain Ridge Protection; Chapter 155, Flood Damage Prevention; Chapter 161, Commercial Outdoor Shooting Range. So we'll be making some amendments to those ordinances. And notice of the public hearing will run in the legal sections, and notices in the mountaineer this Wednesday and next Wednesday will be posted on the county website. Proposed revisions will be posted on the county website, and hard copies will be available during business hours here in the administration office and at the branch of the Haywood County Library, starting this Wednesday. So if anybody's interested in that. Also, I want to kind of turn it over to Bryant just a second to discuss the bids that are being released for, go ahead Bryant, I'll let you describe that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have released the first bid for the EWP program, Mercy Watershed Protection Program. You can actually go to our website and get full information, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. This is for Project Group Nine for EWP. We're going to accept bids until 3 o'clock, 3:00 PM on August 24th, 2023. You can mail those to the Haywood County Finance Office. Attention, Christie Hill, Fourth Floor Historic Courthouse, 215 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, 28746. Another important feature is a pre-bid conference will be held on August 15th, 2023, at 3:00 in the large conference room at the Haywood County Soil and Water Conservation District. That's at 589 Raccoon Road, Suite 203, here in Waynesville. You can also get digital copies at McGill Associates for a fee of $50 per set, and that's McGillAssociates.com. You can also view the documents for free through Quest, is a company that McGill is working with for the bids. You can enter questproject number 8623818, and the password is 2203023. Like I said, all of this information is on our website for folks to go on, look at the documents, and hopefully bid on this first round of debris cleanup.
See, does any commissioners have any constituent concerns?
I have just one, one bit of information for the public. We're having a pesticide collection day on August 23rd. Anybody out there that has pesticides, maybe they've bought a place that had stuff stored in a barn or something that they don't know what it is, that'll be at the Extension and Service Office on Raccoon Road at August 23rd, Wednesday, August 23rd, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. And the North County Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services will be heading that up. So I know a lot of people ask during the year, they run across stuff in the basement, they don't know what it is. So just as kind of a public information announcement there for that.
And dispose of it properly, that'd be great. Does he, do you have anything, Terry? Okay. Okay. As far as, I'm sure Mr. Webb has provided the information that he can provide at this time, so I don't think he's going to be spending any time in jail. So, and also, I've known Joey for several years, and he has the utmost integrity, and I don't, I do not appreciate people making fun of our staff and making accusations of our staff that are unfounded, are always unfounded. So, and they'll continue to be unfounded. So, anyway, just want to make a comment to that. Okay, so next, we'll move to administrative agency reports and presentations. We do not have any. Next is the discussion adjustment to the agenda. I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything?
I think we were going to try to move item number, excuse me, I think item number two.
I'm going to, we're going to do, I'm going to do that.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to have him come up and read that.
Oh, okay. I thought we were, okay.
Okay.
No, other than that, I don't see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. All right, so there are seven items on the consent agenda, and item number two is a request approval of a resolution honoring Sergeant Albert Reeves Allen for 10 years of law enforcement service to Haywood County and awarding his issued badge and sidearm. And I want to have our Sheriff, Bill Wilkie, come forward and read that resolution. And I also want to think, Albert did make it this morning. Good deal. I think we've got to remember that Albert was also a highway patrolman, if I'm not mistaken.
Before I read this proclamation, I just want to say a few words about Albert. Albert served 38 years for the state of North Carolina and the county of Haywood. When I was elected to office, he was one of the first people that came in and said, "Sheriff, are you going to keep me?" I said, "Well, Albert, how in the world could I not keep you?" And since then, we've built a very, I guess, close relationship, and Albert has never tired to ensure that our vehicles are taken care of and make sure that warranties are met, and he's, he's not only saved the county a lot of money, but he has worked very diligently to keep our deputies safe and in the best equipment possible. But there's, the real special thing about Albert is how he talks with people and how he deals with people. His compassion and his ability to relate to those, even when using his authority as a deputy sheriff or a trooper, are unmatched. His career is really unmatched. The things that he's done for us and as a county really can't be measured in what I'm about to read. And then I'm going to read this, and Albert, if you would like to say some words to our commissioners, if it's all right with you, I'd have him do that. And this is, this is what the resolution says. Whereas Sergeant Allen joined the Haywood County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff in 2013, and held the rank of deputy sheriff and sergeant, all while serving within the Uniform Patrol Division of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Sergeant Allen's service and dedication to the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, the citizens of Haywood County, and his many accomplishments in the field of law enforcement during 10 years of service to our community, and a total of 38 years within the profession, are hereby recognized and commended. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 provides that retiring deputies of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office may receive at the sheriff's discretion the issued sidearm of such retiring deputy at a price determined by the Board of Commissioners, and whereas Sergeant Allen has served as a member of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office and is retired from the Haywood County Sheriff's Office effective 1 July 2023. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners as follows, Sheriff William Bill Wilkie is hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 to allow the transfer to Sergeant Albert Reeves Allen the badge worn by him during his service with the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff William Bill Wilkie is hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 to allow the transfer to Sergeant Allen his issued service sidearm Glock 9mm Model 45. Be it further resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Sergeant Albert Reeves Allen for his dedicated service to Haywood County and its citizens. Recognize this day.
Thank you, Sheriff Wilkie. Let me say this is an honor today. I am a Haywood County resident, been raised through the school systems of Haywood County, some of the best schools in the state, and I've been all over the state, worked in many counties. Sometimes at a time like this, words are just not adequate. The schools that I went through, starting at Sun Oak, Hazelwood, Waynesville Middle, Waynesville Township High School, some of the great experiences and teachers that we've ever had has come through these schools to make people like me and others capable of leading a county like Haywood. And I thank you all for stepping up when your time came to fill these offices, to carry on a tradition that I go back many years. When it was drafted in 1968 during Vietnam, I came out. I had no idea I would go into law enforcement, but Chief Arthur Paul Evans came down the street one day, wanted to talk to me. And after talking with him, I gave it a try. I've been in it ever since. I've served in a lot of capacities across the state of North Carolina. I've hauled a lot of dignitaries out of Washington, Tip O'Neill, my cigar friend, all over the state of North Carolina, many governors to different states. I've had the privilege, most of all, of serving right here in this county under some of the best leaders, best law enforcement agencies that you have in the state of North Carolina. Be proud of them. Be proud of your sure. Be proud of the officers. I have been put in compromising positions to have to pull a weapon. They will too. That day will come. I've had experiences with one of your board members here, in the death of one of his family members. Very tragic time. Folks, we got to take care of each other. This is not the last of me. This is the beginning. Cancer. Cancer is not that big a word. It's not bigger than the word God. God is everything. I've had my heavenly Father for over 50 years. When I promised him that I would serve him, that I would share the good news of who he was, and I crave more every day of who he really is in my life, and the will that he has for me in my life. It's just a beginning. Heaven is a beautiful place. I'm looking forward to that day. And one day, I'll see him as he really is, and the most welcome words that I'm looking for is, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant. Enter thou into the presence of the Lord." Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Albert. I appreciate your testimony. I was, I guess, Albert, I kind of, I got to know Albert, and he was able to share with me, you know, highway patrolmen see some pretty tragic things in their lives, and Albert was always a friend to me and was able to help me through a tough time by kind of showing me kind of what happened, if you will. So I appreciate him, and I'll always remember that. Anybody else got anything else to say?
Thank Albert for all the years of the stuff he's done. I worked with him many years in the record business, and he was always really good to all of us record drivers and stuff. We appreciate it.
Anybody have anything on the consent agenda, or they have any other questions on? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. The first item is to request approval of proposed amendments to the Haywood County Greenways Council bylaws to allow permanent 19th member seat for a representation from the Tourism Development Authority. We have our Vice Chair of Greenways Council and Public Health Director Megan Hauser here this morning to talk about that. Hey Megan, come on up.
Good morning. The Greenways Council feels very strongly about adding the seat, amending the bylaws to add the seat, knowing that our greenways and park systems are a very key part of our tourism industry. So we feel that their voice would be valuable to have at the table.
Have any questions? Let's see, Jennifer, you're on the TDA.
I am.
Do you want to comment on that?
Do you have any openings now on the Greenway Council? Do you have any seats that are vacant?
Today, we are proposing to fill one of the seats. We did have several applicants. We were fortunate to have a handful of applicants, and we did make a decision to recommend a particular one, yes. So after that, after that, it should be, should be filled.
Okay, yeah. I know our new TDA director has mentioned several times that where the area that she moved from, the Greenway was very- the Greenway was very, was very important to their tourism. And so I do want to, I know that there's been some concerns about the Greenway, and I just want to, you know, enlist you, I suppose, to manage that very wisely. It can definitely be a real positive thing for communities. But we, I know there's been some, you know, fear and concern around those and how people perceive those as far as safety and maintenance. And so I think we all work together to make it a positive thing for Haywood County.
And as an avid user of them myself, by and large, I have felt really very safe and appreciate the asset that we have.
Several people have said to me, really, over about the last six months of how they use it and when we have folks that come here, how they have really enjoyed it. And locals and tourists take advantage of it on a very regular basis, so. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Anything else?
I know greenways are important for tourism. I mean, that's, you see that when you go other places. A lot of those trails are really a draw for those communities and everything. And I know we're working on some, I know the one at HCC, I guess they had kind of established a little one there that people could go in the evenings and walk.
Absolutely.
So, but I appreciate everything y'all are doing on that, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of the regular agenda.
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, item two of the regular agenda is approval of the Haywood County Revolving Loan Fund for Affordable Housing Guidelines 2023-2024. Bylaws, I'm sorry, bylaws and memorandum of understanding between Haywood County and the Haywood County Revolving Loan Fund and the Sequoia Fund for Management of the Revolving Loan Fund. And our Community and Economic Development Director David Francis is here to speak to that. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody had a nice weekend. One of those things, moments in life, you, you know, you get older and you appreciate people more. And I was 16 years old, the first time I met Albert Allen. Going a little too fast. And he's just been a gentleman throughout his life. And, you know, got to work with Albert several times. And then when he came to the county, it was a blessing that the county got to have him here for what we did. And I just want to tell him thank you for everything that he did for me. As I was growing up, if it hadn't been for him, things, circumstances would be a lot different in my life, that's for sure. So, on to business. So before you, Commissioners, the county wrote a grant with, to Dogwood Health Trust last year. And part of that grant was to use American Rescue Funds as part of the match. So the, we, the county pledged a million dollars to make a difference in affordable housing here in the county. As I mentioned to you all earlier this year, we did receive that grant. And there's three phases to that grant. There's paving at Bethel Village. Bethel Village is a mountain projects development down on Jonathan Creek. And so be able to pave that development will actually open up to more financing through US Department of Agriculture. And also there's a new program coming out as well, too, that will be able to get more affordable housing in there as well, too. The third, second part was for, to do transitional housing at Haywood Pathways. And so what that does is take homeless folks and work with them to get them back into the workforce. So we released some of those funds earlier this year to Pathways to begin the project early on. And so far this year, they have served 12 individuals. 10 adults, seven men, three women, two children. One veteran. And 90% of those folks are now employed. The average wage that they're making is $16.50 an hour. And since that time, four, four folks, four individuals, or excuse me, six individuals has left, and a family of four have left from Pathways, and they're on their own now. So, as you heard, Mr. Albert, Brad needs a little help every now and then. And this was a great helping hand to get people transitioned out from the hard circumstance. And these were all Haywood County residents. Nobody else's Haywood County residents come in.
What was those numbers again, Dave?
I'm sorry, sir?
What, those numbers again? Say that again.
Four, okay, so household served was 10, total individuals served was 12. One veteran, 10 adults, seven men, three women, and two children, one family. 90% of those are employed. Average wages they're making is $16.50 an hour. And now they have exited. The total households exited is four, individuals exited is six. And they are in permanent housing now. So, yeah. So I want to thank Mandy Hathcox and the board at Pathways for the success of this program. The third component of this grant was for an Affordable Housing Revolving Loan Fund. Affordable Housing has a definition of not being cost burden over 30% of your income for affordable housing. So, you know, sometimes, you know, affordable housing's got a connotation now that, you know, that it's this, that, and the other. But, you know, affordable housing, in the end, is workforce housing. And we desperately, desperately need workforce housing. So just give you an overview of the, the Haywood County Revolving Loan Fund was created by a grant awarded by Dogwood Health Trust in Haywood County. The Haywood County Revolving Loan Fund was created for the purpose of providing short-term, low-interest loans to support the initiation, development, and preservation of affordable housing by experienced community-minded organization and experienced developers. Projects that are funded by the fund will have loan terms tailored to the individual project. Loans will be structured as short-term, below-market rate loans that are repaid from project construction or permanent financing, and revolve back into the fund in order to support future development. No grants will be provided for the Haywood County Revolving Loan Fund. The Revolving Loan Fund works exclusive with eligible borrowers, and we will not lend directly to borrowers. Loan money to developers, you know, Mountain Projects, the Habitat for Humanity. Those types of, you know, individuals and organizations will be eligible, you know, for their revolving, revolving loan fund. Certain developers, if they're developing affordable housing, will have that opportunity as well, too. So, part of those guidelines were developed with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And if I did not have the support of Don McGowan throughout this process, as you heard our folks from the Southwest Commission when they talked about the home consortium, that was Don McGowan's idea to begin this. So, you know, Don McGowan's going to be the, you know, the godfather of affordable housing for Haywood County and for Western North Carolina, because that is a seven-county project with the home consortium. So a big thanks to Don McGowan. We wouldn't be where we are without Don McGowan. So, also part of this as well, too, is that we will not be managing those loan funds. So we have reached out with the Sequoia Fund, who will manage those funds, will create the loan package, and will manage that process, take payments, and things like that. We will not be doing, handling any of the funds for that. We'll have a committee that reviews those loans and approves those loans, and then we'll move those to the Sequoia Fund to handle the financing aspect of the revolving loan fund. So it's said that, you know, this was, you know, embedded by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and we feel like we're in a pretty good way to be able to start this. As, in October, you'll hear some more from the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency. And as you know, this will go into this bigger picture of our development fund for the county. We'll have the revolving loan fund, we'll have the funds from the North County Office of Recovery and Resiliency. There's 13 million there. We'll be able to offer down payment assistance, be able to do advanced projects, you know, from the greenfield to ground up to vertical with this as well, too. So a lot of these components and these pieces of the puzzle are all coming together. And it's going to be an exciting time over the next two or three years to see all this come together. So, any questions?
I just, you know, I just want to make a comment. A lot of, a lot of people are buying these, a lot of houses, and they're using them for seasonal rentals. And that's really taken the rental market, you know, it takes away a lot of houses that folks could afford to rent. Out of the, out of the circulation, if you will. And so that's one reason that this is so good to have this type. And then also, I think we need to, you know, it's just like you had mentioned, the folks that we had helped. And sometimes we don't share our successes enough. Everybody wants to focus on a negative or two, because there's not that many. But that we don't focus on the successes and the literally hundreds of people at Pathways and that Mountain Projects have helped get into housing, in stable housing. Because if you have stable housing, you know, you're going to have better citizens, if you will. So, so I appreciate, you know, the vision and us being able to be part of this.
The, Ms. Best, if you, you know, to the Chairman's point, we look at those short-term rental numbers, and it was, can you remember what it was from 19 to now? I know it's, it's close to 1,800 now, right?
1707, I think was the number for maybe May.
Yeah, yeah. So 1707, and that's up from...
Before, I think before the pandemic, it was somewhere about 800 or 900.
Yeah, 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 something like that. Big, huge explosion. So in, you know, to your point, in the, the average home price in the fourth quarter of 2019 was $281,000. As of May of '23, $425,000. So roughly about almost a 50% increase. And year over year, from just last year, it's a 6% increase. Haywood County is still on the rise. The North Carolina and the US are slowly, are slowing down. Haywood County is on the rise. The median, so the median's the midpoint, some higher, some lower, but the midpoint. In 2019 was $250,000. As of May of '23, $355,000, $355,000, a 42% increase. Wages, fourth quarter of '19 were roughly at $799. They're up to $900 a week. Ain't keeping up. Ain't keeping up. And so, you know, the post-COVID world, you know, is really affected. I mean, you know, Haywood County in a lot of ways. I mean, it's affected, you know, a lot of places all over. But, you know, this is our home, you know, and we need to take care of our workforce. And, you know, here's some people say, well, there's going to be this, you know, glutton of housing. You know, we've got a development here, development there. But there's, you know, you go and look now in the MLS and what, you know, this program, you know, revolving loan fund and with the funds for recovery, we're trying to keep those things below 300,000. That's our goal. I saw, we worked with a gentleman down east that has a vision and a goal in how he took, you know, their situation there and made it, and made it better there by doing affordable housing there, similar to what Mountain Projects does. So we'll be able to take some of his lead and advice and help incorporate this here as well, too. Looking, very looking forward to getting underway with this.
David, how's this revolving loan fund in correlation with the rising interest rates? How does that factor in? Is it a locked, locked-in interest rate, or is it variable, or how's that?
No, we'll lock in the interest rates, the, we'll, we'll be below 5% on these loans. We'll be below 5.
Well, the reason I ask, you ran through all those numbers about how hard it is to gain homeownership now. I saw some numbers last week. Where are the average home mortgage now? In Buncombe County, or in the, no, it wasn't Buncombe.
It's an MSA.
Yes, it was $2,600 a month was the average home mortgage. 18 months ago, it was half that. So you go from being able to secure a home, first-time homeowner, a homeowner may be getting a 3% loan 18 months ago to two years ago. Now then it's over 7%. And seemingly, on the fact, still rising, you know, from the last Federal Reserve meeting. So for first-time homeowners, these are obstacles. Those other obstacles you mentioned. But naturally, I mean, for first-time, first-time homeowners, the interest rates, runaway inflation, it's a game changer. It's a, it's a game stopper for a lot of people.
And so, to, you know, to help that out, you know, we'll have this. And then with, when we bring the incor funds down, we're waiting, still waiting on approval from HUD there with that. We'll have a down payment assistance program. They'll be, you know, very tailored to first-time home buyers. And also, you know, the people who, you know, are coming in and are teaching, working in their EMS, will also be able to give assistance to those as well, too, that are, you know, trying to stay in the community and make a difference here. Also have a down payment assistance to help there as well, too.
Let me, I'd like to kind of pull some pieces of this together, just so that the public understands. So, some of these funds helped to pave a subdivision off of the Old Claude Road, correct?
Correct. No, 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 Bethel Village.
Bethel Village, okay. So, because of that, because it was not paved, people buying homes there could not qualify for USDA loans because USDA requires certain things, and one of them is paved access.
Correct.
It has to be a public road pavement.
So that, that loan allows a down payment of 3%, which is huge, because a traditional mortgage is 20%. So, you know, let's do the easy math on $300,000. $60,000 really stops folks from being able to purchase a home. So these mortgages, these USDA mortgages, these are, these are just assisting the people that assist us every day. Our teachers, our EMS workers, our law enforcement, you know, our folks that work at Walmart and the grocery store. It allows them to have a 3% down payment assistance now on paved public access in the subdivisions. So it's all worked together, and I really want to highlight that because sometimes we get pushback about handouts and, you know, helping some people and not helping others. These are, in my opinion, very well-designed programs, and I like to see them all come together. So I just want to be really clear about that, that these folks are hard-working people applying for mortgages, and it's getting all of these things to fall together to make it accessible and affordable, so.
Just like you said, Ms. Best, it is truly workforce housing. People are, you know, working in the community, and it's a big difference. You know, so the challenges at Bethel Village, I mean, you know, there as well, too, is that, you know, you've heard, you know, Ms. LaFleur, you know, talk about, you know, they received a home grant as well, too, you know, to recombine, you know, and combine, remerge, and split, you know, 10 lots. You know, part of that is that has to have an environmental review done as well, but for, you know, because, you know, those are HUD funds from the home side. And so, you know, this is how, this is all working together, because some of our incor, you know, will be able to, funds will be able to help pay for the environmental review to have all that done. So, you know, all this is, you know, working in conjunction together. If we didn't have, you know, something over here, we wouldn't have anything over here. So now this, you know, is all coming together. So, you know, I appreciate you mentioning, you know, mentioning that as well.
I appreciate what you're doing. It's particularly the down payment assistance is a big help to folks, because that is...
Very excited about that program.
Yeah, that is a huge, that stops a lot of people from being able to experience homeownership.
And that won't just be for, you know, USDA program. If they're getting, you know, from a traditional bank loan, from, you know, from a commercial bank, that will apply there as well, too. So there'll be a little bit of a learning curve for, you know, some of our lending institutions to be able to learn how to, you know, tap into those funds for these first-time home buyers and for the, you know, for some civil servant workers.
Important to our community, so it's great.
So to the point, to the point, for us to approve these guidelines, these bylaws, I'm sure the county attorney and the managers looked it over, and y'all, there's, you've looked it over, and it's, it meets the guidelines that...
Yes, sir.
David, how many people do you think will be able to help in this city? How many affordable housing do you think we'll have?
You know, so, you know, let's take, you know, Habitat for Humanity can build, Habitat can only build one to two houses at a time. If they want to, you know, plug into this, they could actually, you know, the way Habitat builds houses could actually build five at a time. So, you know, that will help them increase their capacity and move on. The, you know, this board was very generous about three years ago. And, you know, the sale from the former hospital, it was 54 units of affordable, you know, affordable there, there. We put that money in as a revolving loan fund to Mountain Projects. Of course, as, you know, costs have increased, you know, they're, and they've got some funds there, but they're only able to build, you know, you know, two houses at the most. And it's basically about 1.75 houses right now with the cost increase. So this will allow them to build, you know, another, you know, one to two, two more houses at a time, if they go up to the 500,000 max. So, so putting, you know, I can't say, you know, you know, there might be a family of, you know, two or a family of four go in these houses. So, but, you know, there'll be, I think it'll have, you know, a large impact. And then when the incor funds come and, you know, start developing, you know, some other, other sites, finishing out Bethel Village, as Ms. Best, you know, mentioned. finishing out Bethel Village as Ms. Best, you know, mentioned, and other development on Harkins, be able to finish those out, that, that's another, you know, 20, 30 to 35 houses there as well.
You know, this, the interesting thing about those numbers, they sound low, five, five units or five houses. But there have been, there have been months that we had no houses on the market less than 300,000.
Yeah.
So there was nothing for anybody to buy.
And then what's below there, you know, you know, I wouldn't stick my mother-in-law in it, not saying a lot, you know? But the, but, you know, it's, because, you know, it's, there's high price. It needs another 100,000 infusion of cash to, you know, to bring it up and, you know, and make it habitable and livable in. So it's, it's, it's a really, you know, weird market right now, that's for sure. The, the one thing, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, that the, when I was, when Mr. Quinn and I were filling that, we asked Mr. Bryant to sign the MOU between Haywood County and the Sequoia Fund. And so if you make, I need to just amend the motion where Mr. Morehead can sign the MOU on behalf of the county.
Okay, Amy. Okay, so...
It just says his, it has his name on there. I just want to make sure that everybody was aware, his name's on there.
Okay. So when we vote on item two of the regular agenda, we want to add...
That Mr. Morehead can sign.
That Mr. Morehead can sign that document.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For...
Yeah, the MOU.
Approval, for the MOU.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
I'm making a motion to amend item number two to allow the county manager to sign the MOA with the Sequoia Fund.
We need to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Yeah, so you want to...
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And then I'd like to make a motion to amend item number two to allow the county manager to sign the MOA with Sequoia Fund for managing the revolving loan.
What do you think, Amy? Good? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody that's working on this, for sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just to add, I recognize David for all of his efforts. Last week, he worked on site development, site visits, broadband, and, and this housing project. Just to let you know how much work David gets done in the last three or four days, he's knocked off some really big projects and should be proud of the, the efforts. It's, it's great to have him working with us in so many critical areas.
Thank you for bringing that up, Bryant. Appreciate that. We have great staff. Appreciate all the hard work they do. Sometimes we get a little weary of some folks that always want to come be negative, negative, negative. So it's good to, good to bring out and highlight. We don't do a good job of telling our story. We'll let other people tell it for us and they'll just make up stuff. So appreciate you bringing that up, Bryant.
Yeah, you know, a lot of times I'll call David and I'm the chairman of the Board of Commissioners and I get his voicemail because he's usually on the phone with somebody more important than me discussing economic development or, or other issues. So, so I know David's busy with stuff, so. And, you know, along those lines, Tommy, you know, Albert Allen, when he said what he did, just reminded me of, he's a good example of Haywood County natives who come back here to work and, and live and, and make our county a great place to live.
They always reflect back on how great our county is because they've experienced some of the other bad experiences across the state.
Yep. Yeah, Albert's been across the state, for sure.
I've, I've had the displeasure of experiencing some of that myself. There's 14 counties that I saw recently, they're on the watch list by the, the powers that be because of their financial, financial situations with their, there's 14, I believe, still on the list, several municipalities. And we're, we've never been close to that. So we, we always come away as a bright and shining star in the eyes of other commissioners. I was talking to one the other day and he was talking about problems they were having. And he said, it looked like it was going to have to raise their tax rate. And I said, well, what is your tax rate? And he said 92 cents. I said, you're kidding? And he said, no. So we're very fortunate, very fortunate.
Okay, next item will be number three, request approval of a settlement of collections for 2022, 2023, and our tax collector, Sebastian Cothran, will update us on that. Hey, hey, Sebastian? It's one of those duties that you have to...
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. So I'm here to request approval of the settlement of collections for tax year 2022, 2023. So this past yard net levy was $49,88,499. We collected $48,257,725 for a collection rate of 98.31%. Me and my staff have tried very hard this year. We've had, we did 304 bank attachments, 82 garnishments. And right now we have 301 active payment plans. And that's not counting our ACH program, which, where it comes out of people's bank accounts once a month. They sign up for it. And it's not counting payment plans that have already been paid out. So we've tried very hard and while the collection rate is slightly down, we're doing the best we can. And I'd like to thank my staff and just thank them for doing a great job. So now I'd like to request approval of the settlement of collections.
Do we have any questions for Sebastian?
Just a comment, I appreciate the hard work you and your staff have done. I know you've got great, great staff members and you've done an outstanding job. And I just appreciate that and working with people and working with people that need help and our senior citizens. And I've had zero complaints, amazingly, I've had zero complaints from your department. And I appreciate that.
Is the number of payment plans up?
Yes, the number of payment plans is up. I think around this time last year was around 200, so we're above 300.
And do you think that's related to the economy or...?
Yes, and with more forced collections, people come in after we attach them and we can set up a payment plan for them, work with them. But a lot of the time we have to do these things to make, to get people in the door. But we're always happy to work with people. People should know that the bills do come out next month. And we can always start in September instead of wait until they come to Lincoln. We can, we're always willing to work with people. We can set a payment plan up. We could do it now if they want to and pay ahead, which a lot of our payment plans we've been doing. We've been including the 23, so these people can just keep on working throughout the year so they don't get behind again.
Appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, I appreciate you, too. I, I've realized that anytime you take over a new position, a new job, it's difficult and comes with a learning curve and you've really stepped up to the challenge. And the folks in your office are always easy to work with and seem to be real happy to be there. And we appreciate what they do. I would imagine that being in the tax office is probably not a place where people are happy necessarily when they come. But at least maybe they leave there with a good experience. So I appreciate you doing that and your staff as well.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for what you do.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion, we approve item three.
So moved.
For the regular agenda, okay? Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks, Sebastian. Okay, item number four is to request approval of budget amendment from Public Schools Debt Service Fund, 1.68 million to appropriate fund balance reserved for public schools to purchase land, to purchase land. And we have our finance director, Christian Owen. Hey, Christian?
Good morning. This is a request to take fund balance of 1.68 million of the sales tax funds that are reserved for the public schools. We do not have finalized fiscal year '23 fund balance yet, but we are right now about 5.9 million. We are still waiting on some sales tax revenue because that's a couple of months behind. So, so they do have enough balance to take the 1.6 million to purchase the land.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Is that money that was just put up for the school?
Yes, that money is reserved statutorily for the schools, for capital, any kind of capital purchases. Or debt service.
The county's not...
It's not the county's money, no.
And we don't have to match it or nothing like that?
No, no.
Okay, anybody else, anybody else have a question? And they've asked for this. The school system has asked for this.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think Dr. Trevor Putnam's here if you have any specific questions on the land.
Anybody have any questions for Trevor? Are we waiting to come up? Pretty much.
How about that glowing endorsement you got from Mr. Allen, though?
That'll cost me, I have to pay for that.
It will, that's right, that's right.
He's a fine man.
And your board has voted unanimously to ask for this?
Yes, what this will allow us to do is secure property to move critical infrastructure from our Clyde location. This is the third time in recent history, but that area, before any structures existed, has flooded all total 10-plus times. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And so this would allow us to get our IT and boardroom. It also allows us to access North Carolina Emergency Management Funds to the tune of 2.5 million. But it's a reimbursement program. So we have to use our own money to purchase and then North Carolina Emergency Management reimburses. So that's, that's the intent. The land is also large enough for other opportunities down the road as they present themselves, so.
What plans have you got for the, the places this is going to replace, like the Clyde building down there and stuff? What are y'all going to do with those?
It is the, the Old Clyde High School, or it's been called 15 different things. Central Haywood High School, it's been Old Clyde High School. It's been Clyde Elementary, I think, at one time. So, but the only facilities we're actually replacing from that property is the IT department, which we know is critical to our day-to-day operations. Back 20 years ago even, IT wouldn't have been as, as important or as large scale. But it is very much a part of our everyday operation. So we want to get that critical infrastructure out of the floodway and to a safe location. The property named in this is, it's kind of important to its location because it's 15 minutes as you take off max to any one of our schools. So it's central to our current school locations, with the exception of Meadowbrook. And there's just no good way to get there. It's kind of off the beaten path just a little bit. But that will help us in efficiency and time in response to critical needs our schools have. Our, our board has done a fine job of researching multiple properties and looking at a variety of options. But this one offered the most land, it offered the best location at the best price. You know, all three of those things go into making a decision.
Do we have any questions?
I, I will just point out, as Christian has already said, these funds cannot be used for operational costs. We, we certainly wish they could because that would have meant no budget cuts and nobody wants to be the first-year superintendent and make cuts. So I wish they could have been accessed for teaching positions, custodial clerical, but they cannot. Anyone who's listening wants to look it up, NCDOR, you can look it up, Article 40 and 42, and how these funds have to be used. They cannot be used for operational costs.
Yeah, that's, that's something people got to realize. You just don't have one big pot of money you can just do whatever you want to with. You have, you have certain things you can do with that pot of money, so. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, we approve item four of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
Is there any, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. So, thank you, Travis, appreciate you. Good luck on all that, that's a lot of moving parts, you know?
It's a pretty big operation, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and then item number five is to request approval of a budget amendment, emergency efforts of $20,000 to appropriate contingency funds to cover associated cost of campers for flood victims. And costs are reimbursable by the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management.
Budget Management.
Okay. Go ahead, Christian.
Yes, we still have some people in campers. These costs are for various things. It could be rent, it could be any repairs. But regardless of what we spend them for, it is reimbursable by the State Budget Office. So we just have to spend it upfront and then they'll, they'll return it to us.
Any questions on that? Can I have a motion to approve item five of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so unanimous. Thank you, Christian. Okay, we'll move, our next order of business is appointments. The first is to request approval of a reappointment of Stuart Bass to the Waynesville Planning Board as an ETJ representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the July 25th, 2023 meeting, Waynesville Town Council approved the recommendation and reappointment of Mr. Bass to a second, three-year term. He served his first term as an ETJ representative in good standing.
An ETJ is extraterritorial jurisdiction, so in case everybody wants to know. Okay, is there, can I have, can I have a motion to approve item one of appointments?
I'm making a motion to approve item one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay. Number two is of appointments, is to request approval of an appointment of Kirk, Kristen Hammett to a three-year term on the Greenway Advisory Council to fulfill a vacant-at-large position. Speaking of Greenway Council positions there. So do you need us, that's just...
Only to let you know, at the July 25th, the Greenway Advisory Council reviewed applications and recommended Kristen Hammett to be appointed to that three-year term, largely based on her history of volunteering with the town of Waynesville and commitment to Greenways.
Okay. And that's, that's the one Megan was telling us about earlier. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, we approve item two of appointments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Unanimous? Okay, our next order of business is closed session, but we do not have one. And then does anyone have anything else to bring before the board before we adjourn? And here and now, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.